United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner.
Anyone wishing to speak before the city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the spine and table in the back. Please turn off your cell phones. And or silence them during the meeting. Thank you. Announcement for this room attending, if you're joining tonight's meeting. Please identify yourself if you would, if your phone name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. To use it, click on the reaction icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of a hand. So the purpose of public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. The time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Okay, presentation, our report, finance director.
Madam Mayor, Council President and members of the council. We have for you a staff report on the 2022 audit. And I'd just like to, obviously, reading that whole report is riveting. Hopefully you took it with you and if you needed help going to sleep sometimes, there's a lot of information in there and it's tricky to digest. What I tried to do on the staff report was just hit the highlights of the things that have been noted in the past in terms of a clean audit and that we had a good working relationship. We had no disagreements. We worked through other information and things that like the corrected and uncorrected misstatements. I was highly offended when I saw that in the letter and so immediately called him and said, well, what? What were the uncorrected misstatements? And he's like, no, it all pertains to their report in terms of generally accepted standards for the accounting board and the things that they have to put in there, but it's not part of our financial statements. So therefore not considered material and that was good news to me. There was one interesting thing this year that I didn't note in the report, but I wanted to just let you know that because of some under, some lower interest rate bonds, so I put all of the excess cash in the LGIP Local Government Investment Pool, which is not, you know, tearing it up as far as interest, but it's also very, very low risk. And it's a state-run investment pool for municipalities and government entities. And there were actually some lower performing bonds. And because of that, we had to write down the value of that to 98.98%. So I'm just pointing out the level of detail that they look at. So we, we made that adjusting entry. He's pretty sure, he said those bonds matured in 90 days. So we'll probably just reverse that at the end of this year. But those kinds of things that we were talking through and you will note again that there was one area that we were actually over budget and it was the city manager's budget. And it was because we kicked in, he signed up for health insurance in January, which was not part of the original plan because he hadn't done that a year before. And so we didn't include it in the budget and it came in under the 5% variance. That requires a budget adjustment. So I did not bring it to the council for that, but I believe that we had talked about it a few times. So they've taken care of all the year-end filings. They, I would just like to say kudos to our grant management team because our grant compliance review went very well and they had nothing but great things to say about that and our documentation.
It's not really a team, it's Brian.
I know. Yeah, right there. And right now they're in the middle of finalizing the urban renewal agency audit, but it's, you know, very, very small compared to this one. So it'll be done shortly and be all wrapped up. I'm also having, there's also year-end report on an urban renewal agency that is different than your audit. And your end report that an audit agency does. So I sent an email over to Elaine Howard because they have offered to do those things for urban renewal. So stay tuned on that, but those, that's of course on the other agency. So any questions or comments on this report or the audit? Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next we'll have the Sutherland Area Chamber of Commerce and our new executive director, Jessica Patchmore. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you. Hi. I'm just waiting over it. I like following the audit report though.
Oh, yeah.
Um, thank you guys so much. I was really excited to speak today. I'm very excited to be back in Sutherland. I graduated from the Relling School with Sean and Donnie and more of you out there. But I moved away and I was the, the chamber director at the Lake County Chamber for a little under five years. And lived in Lake County for seven years and I moved back over here after divorce, which was awesome. It's exciting. It's fun like Christmas every day. So I'm truly like, really like, I mean, keep like that stores here. It's nice. There's not snow on the ground. Lakeview was awesome. Last year I won the Travel Oregon Rising Star Award for for Oregon regions, which was great. I took that for my work in Lakeview, Lake County. I have a strong background in community engagement and that's how I do work the chamber. I prefer face-to-face engagement, prefer small business development and small business program. I like a thriving downtown and a continuing education paper. I like them to really get resource out of us. We have a lot of resource to give. I'll be going for our benefit. I'll be changing though. We doing a lot more projects. I have a lot in store. I have a lot of ideas. I'm just really excited. If anyone has any questions, I hope I kind of gave a quick overview. I'd love to answer anything or just, so I'm looking forward to meeting with each of you, hopefully individually and just finding to you out in the community. And yeah.
Um, I just want to say, if you haven't seen her out there yet, she does the lives on each week, each Wednesday. She retires and change her channel and gives a full update of what's coming up, what's taking place, where to go, what to do. And so that's awesome. I said from the beginning, somebody back in there that's like Tammy.
Oh, now we think we found her. And I heard that all over town too, the Tammy. Oh, but I need to strike. Well done. Thank you.
What you can do at work day is that they do more.
Oh, I do it on Facebook Live, so you can watch it at the time in real time. I do that so people can ask questions or it's an event or anything you can add or not mention it. Or you can watch it after, so people can get the lowdown. I do it instead of a newsletter because it, there's a lot of events going on. There's always a lot of stuff happening for our members and for our community. And it's just better to get it in real time and more engaging. People remember it better. They like seeing it. They get into a team and that's how they find a lot of both the information and community. This is just a little bit easier to listen to, hopefully if I don't mess up my work too much.
And we give information in the, in the minutes that we can. Or you can just click on Facebook Live and look it up yourself.
The Chamber, Chamber, Chamber of Commerce. The Sutherland Area Chamber of Commerce, you should already have.
So if we could give them that note. For I think.
Four o'clock every Wednesday.
And thank you.
And any of. We're gonna go. No, yeah, two o'clock. And any information from the city that you guys want out? Feed that to me. Just email it to me before Wednesday and I'll get it out every week.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the, that's agenda. For the November 14th, 22 minutes. Do I have a motion?
I shall make a motion to accept the number four. As presented.
You have a motion and a second and a discussion.
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Okay, so we're skipping this. We're skipping.
According, Madam Mayor and Council President, according to our almost brilliant city attorney. There is a smile. He suggested we just save this for next meeting.
Okay, then on to the resolution 22 dot 14. The typical approval of the funding policy of the procedure handled.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Melanie Masterfield, Deputy City Recorder. So tonight council is being asked to approve this resolution for our employee handbook policies and procedures. Per CIS, they suggest that every two to three years, we go through, kind of do an overhaul on the handbook, get it updated. This year, a committee of staff and council members went through that handbook and gave it the AOK. So now we're bringing it to you guys for final approval.
Madam Mayor, if I could also, it was, it's not, it wasn't so simple as that. There was this internal vetting of this thing for almost a year. And so it's not too unlike the budget. When all the department heads and staff, as Council President Hamilton can attest, go through it. We then set with our city attorney and they go through it. We then work through CRS, CIS, our risk management. They go through it, they write it out. And then Melanie gives it to me and I go word for word and tear it apart. It wasn't too bad this year, though, was it? And, but anyway, just so that we're all in together, we all have a little piece of it was really, this was the most comprehensive one that I think I've ever been a part of and it was a great teamwork even. With council members of help provide input to it. But what adds a piece, the piece of resistance to it is that when the council also and gives it that final credibility that anything wound up in court, it's, it's solid.
We approve resolution number 2022 dot one fourth of approval for the city of Sutherland. Boy, helps us.
Second. Need discussion.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is resolution 22 dot 15, election canvas of votes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Deputy City Recorder Melanie Masterfield, again. So tonight, resolution 2022 point 15 is our election canvas of votes. So we're asking council to acknowledge and certify the official results of the general election that was held on November 8th. We received this information from the Douglas County Clerk's Office Elections Division on December 5th. The purpose of the canvas of votes is to account for every ballot cast and to ensure it, their validity. And that included in the election totals. The Douglas County Clerk's Election Division is the one who provides the official canvas of votes to the city of Sutherland following an election. So we ask you to acknowledge and certify these votes.
Thank you very much.
Resolution.
Second. Also. Any discussion?
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We need to go purchase approval for the water treatment. Staff report.
Mayor, members of council, here as well, public works. This year, the water treatment division budgeted for a new half ton pickup truck. Trying to keep those things updated. So it's time for them to replace one and kind of hard to find them now. They found one up in Sandy, Oregon at the suburban auto group for a price of $45,000, $69.45. That group is part of the state purchasing that meets our requirements. And so I, I can try to answer any questions, but my suggested motion. Any questions?
Okay. Forty-five, seven.
Oh.
Oh.
Fifty-nine.
The most suggestive motion, but the price.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I guess it's for $7.69. Oh, is that the correct price? It was the correct price.
Sixty-nine.
Forty-five, seven, sixty-nine.
My apologies, I mistyped that last line.
Well, I wasn't sure about. Right, it's really.
You could have come back with.
I, I could. On the sales. Be cool. Usually have nine months.
Yeah, we need a second.
Right.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now we can have discussion.
Okay. They have something on. And the customer can put it in. And you actually bought a word. Actually, we got. They asked. And they have lots put on. They have to be nothing. Even including the price of box. Put a lift gate on it. I think in the end, you know that. So that's one of the four. Yeah, it saves a lot of money. Without the. Anyway, I drove that out so maybe you might want to check into that. We have five cabinet chassis for putting twenty boxes on them. Usually the one that's up a little bit bigger, but yeah, those guys want directly to do that. They just need the regular pickup, but we could. That's enough aware to be worthwhile. Sure. Yeah.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So TV side of the sidewalk extension, Sutherland Avenue. Roadline to Old Street.
There. First. I don't do that. I'm east of town. JRT is feverishly working on that stretch of sidewalk. They've got it, I'm gonna say 75% done. There's some kind of complications that we knew about, but it's bad holes to lift and some few dragways that are a little more problematic, but they're really closing in on on completing the, the job. They really got in there and, and worked quickly. Effectively, so. I think that that, that should be done like first of the year substantially. Going well. Next year we plan on pushing on out to Quail and a little more complicated that next stretch, but builds a shoulder, a little more of a shoulder to drop. To handle that six foot sidewalk, but anyway, any questions?
Do we manage your report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council President, members of council. So for those of you who've been involved for a while and most of you are fairly new from the strategic plan that we initiated the strategic plan now like 10 years ago. And strategic plan developed our vision, our mission, our core values and eight principal goals that the council set out through community engagement process. I, I'd like to ask in February, you schedule a second meeting for a workshop, just go back and reexamine the strategic plan and give us direction on what your council priorities will be for the next two years. But you know, the strategic plan is a global thing that is, has time lines, deadlines. And we try to keep you totally informed of the status of all those things that we promised, agreed to tell, we told the community what we're gonna do. Well, this is taking it a little bit further and just getting a, going in and looking at the strategic plan now as time and things have changed. And see if you want to continue with the eight goals, you want to reorient, do that. Once you solidify kind of like the strategic plan, hopefully you can do this in one evening. And then out of that will come, you know, the strategic plan is your vision, your mission, your goals. Underneath that, then our objectives underneath that are, are what we had called departmental responsibilities. And underneath that are individual work tasks for each employee. So we're down at the very bottom of this plan and see the employee base and follow it all the way up to the goals, vision, mission. So that has some importance in terms of long-term letting the community know we kind of thought about this. So I'd like to ask when you think about it, and of course the new council will start in January. And Counselor Woods will be on board at that time and Counselor Daigle will be re, re sworn in and we'll go forward from there. But be thinking about having a special workshop where we make it.
Can we do that last one?
Yes, that's what we did, council priorities. And I'd like to go back a little further and just have you give study to this strategic plan itself, especially with regards to our vision, mission, our core purpose. What our values are, why do we exist? Why do we exist? And I, I had a lengthy conference. I'm, just so you don't know, I'm, I've been selected to be a member of the board of directors of the City Management Association. Had a great argument with them over how cities have been pulled away from their six core responsibilities to deal with politically driven and globally driven initiatives and actually spending taxpayer money on global initiatives when there are people on your streets, you know, and your butter and your syrup bills. Anyway, my point is this is the time to look at it. No, ma'am.
And we have council comments. Remember monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the entire group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside of the meeting. So our first one is.
I have a couple things. First thing, I'd like to recognize the Rainwater and Committee for putting on a different kind of parade coming up here. You know, what? Management kind of things. And I know from past experience, it's not always real rewarding, but I'd like to recognize the benefits of efforts and that. And it's really nice if you show up at that. That's important. I think that's important to some faces. And the other thing is a question, and, and I guess I don't really need to answer right now, but I've been curious about downtown, but what the, we must have some kind of an idea of what businesses we want downtown and how to encourage here. The whole thing. But I'd like to hold a bit more about that at some point. And I don't know who that.
Well, myself and Counsel Grossman are the co-chairs of Southern Downtown Development, except I'm done. But we did a survey. We surveyed 200 residents and we actually, and then we brought the Main Street program in here to facilitate a community gathering. And we identified a, a list of about 25 focus downtown oriented businesses that we felt, felt would improve the economy of downtown. And we got that somewhere and get that for you. Here's a pretty good outcome, I think. And we're on that track right now.
Thank you. Counsel Whitaker.
Couple of people have mentioned why we allow people to park trailers, motorhomes, vehicles and stuff in their yards. On the street is one. But I've seen several yards that were full of it. And I think sometime in the past, not too, just that was something that was brought up. And but nothing was done. So it seems like.
But yes, you could do that. We actually had a lengthy talk at our last department head meeting about what do we do during this time of homelessness. We could go drive these people out of their homes and they're gonna wind up in the camp. And so where we are right now is saying this isn't a good time to take a draconian approach to cause positive harm to the quality of life of not only those people, but with the community in general. Until we get a system of service in place that works for everybody, it's to some degree at this time, because of the culture change and the way things are. It's not very, I guess, respectful and honoring of people's issues that they're facing right now financially and trying to live. It's not very, uh, I guess respectful and honoring of people's issues that they're facing right now financially and trying to live. And we talked to a number of people saying, man, if I didn't have these people living here, they're gonna be in that camp. And I'm talking dozens of these throughout town, so. Yeah, if you, you, the council can direct us to do that, and we will be like. You know, the police going from door to door, kicking these people out, I just think that, that. The caring approach is to. Let us get the systems in place for service, get the economy approved. And when we get to another change, but at the end of the day, uh, you're the boss, if you want us to do that, we can.
I, I don't think that. That people were referring to the fact that. Somebody had parked a trailer there and somebody was living, but. I think it was more like that's a convenient way to put your poor car, you know? It, it just becomes kind of junk, but I'm not talking about kicking people out of vehicles that are parked.
No, we're talking about people who have trailers in their yards with their children, their neighbors, their grandchildren, the neighbor's kids. Uh, you know, my wife has a dozen kids in her school, at least a dozen, I know of, they're homeless. But.
Talking about a registered.
Are you got, are you got trailers? Oh, I, stuff like that, that's what I thought. Oh, I'm sorry councillor, I guess the focal point in the complaints that I have received have been about what we're just, what I just went off on this great little speech. Thank you all for listening, no files necessary, uh, uh, yeah, I apologize. But now you're all well informed that one of the things that we're not doing is kicking people out. Kind of living in a trailer next to their home, uh, so long as it's neat and orderly. And that, uh, it's, it's just isn't a time of the season to be doing things like that. But that, we'll jump right on it.
You know, I got problems, actually. I don't see the problem somebody probably. I mean, you gotta put a stone there and. It's kind of like you're deciding what's beautiful or not, from your perspective, not from people who count it. I am this kind of thing, and I don't, I, I actually. Cause I have a plot. I mean, I've got an acre and I've got plenty of room, and they're not really. But I could see a lot of people.
But a lot of places, I'm gonna think of, there's probably like there is. And that's four or five abandoned vehicles on their property.
I'm talking about in our neighborhood streets that we have that people live on, like. Those kinds of streets. Uh, where there are residential lots. And they don't put them in their backyards, they put them on a front yard.
And they're long.
Yeah.
I don't see a storm.
Okay, well. For people, for people that come to this area. Looking perhaps to make several of their home. And they see that kind of stuff. I don't think that's great.
Okay.
Well, the code is what the code is, and they deal with it all the time, and Kitty deals with it all the time. Uh, in those particular cases, there's a reason for it, and it's called community quality of life immunity. If you wanna live in a community in a neighborhood, there are certain responsibilities you have, and that is to kick junk off of your yard. Use your yard for what it's intended for, uh, not for a, a, a storage facility, so. I understand and respect that, the intent is for those that want to put stuff in their yards and do that, do what. Councillor Bagel, Bagel, Daigle did is buy an acre that gives you the space to put it out somewhere where it's. You know, not in a condensed neighborhood, so I think we're talking a little bit apples and oranges over the two issues. And I, I don't see why we can't, uh, Christie, do you have anything you wanna say, or Brian?
Is this still about complaint driven only so that uh, Kitty would have to get a complaint?
In, in general, i- i- how we've done it is said, the council tells us to do it, we're gonna do it. Or if we get a complaint, we're gonna do it. Except with regard to the complaints that people don't like the idea that people are living in. But, but when we look at it and see that it's clean, it's orderly, and at the end of the day, nobody is being harmed by it. Oh, there would be significant harm caused by it if we went and closed them down and shut those people out. And so until we, again, I would just tell them, uh, councillor Smalley. Uh, that we're still working on the plan with the homeless thing, and our whole agenda is to put ourselves out of business. And Uncle Hart's in the process of taking this whole thing over, they've gotten a considerable grant. And we're in the process now of implementing a system that is going to build a tiny home village for people to move into. Uh, to the extent that there'd be a system then of care in which when we did go to move people out, we could say, you know what? No, it's not right for you to be here, but we have an option for you. And until we can get to that point where that option is, I think we're better off leaving it as it is.
I would say some of those places. And I've been known to talk to Kitty. Where there are disabled vehicles that look like garbage and have been like wrecked, sitting in the yards. And grass is all grown up around them. That I. To be addressed, and so far has been. So I think. Um, anyway, anybody else?
I do have a quick update, Wayne just sent it to me, or says, oh, we got six in the housing this week. One person moved on, so seven are leaving, three went to jail, so we're down to twenty-five people. Down from thirty-two to twenty-five, so. And like I said, he's, uh, they've been awarded a hundred thousand dollar grant. And we're gonna use those monies to begin the implementation of this next phase.
Uh, the Christmas lights and the trees down there on the hatch shell. Have people have mentioned that?
There are two items I'd like to question, uh. We should be getting, or hope, I don't know, we should be getting snow here, the public court. Ready to tackle that. Task, or carry the load.
Absolutely. As a city manager, I can speak unequivocally.
Thanks, Eric.
Are you gonna let him just drop right now?
He does it comfortably.
I enjoy that. You enjoy it.
We have our snow plow, um, we were able to use it a little bit last year, worked like a charm. And we have a new backhoe, so we'll be out in force if we get anything. Substantial, yeah.
It's like our next week.
We don't, uh, we don't. We don't put stuff down like any type of.
The county comes through, they do central, it seems like, when they're in the area and the seedless strip down there, but all our side streets.
That's just on the main one.
Yeah.
The second item I have is, uh. The code. Dates that, uh, about vehicles that was abandoned. And has no licensing and grabbing laws and everything. So I would like to have, uh. Staff look at that for the, uh, uh, public safety section and. Be more proactive. In their time. Uh, about wanting to abandon vehicles and like vehicles. Don't develop on, on block. Being on block for three years.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to state that Joe Grousman is completely inappropriate, providing specific directions to staff that requires a majority vote at the city council. Okay, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be happy to, Joe, Joe Grousman.
That was Kitty anytime. Your point.
Yes, she's doing a great job. Okay. Do you hear that?
No.
That's, I have nothing. Praise God.
The chamber hosted the Christmas tree lighting Sunday evening, and we had a really good turnout. We just had a little glitch, the, the microphones. I don't think they heard anything else, but. Which was okay.
You did a good job.
You couldn't even hear me.
I did, I was standing right next to you, almost right next to you, so I agree.
Anyway, but the, the light were fabulous. Um, I was just kind of. Attacked afterwards because all the kids running in the trains and inside and all around those. Ports everywhere.
Well, it was so funny to see her chasing these little kids all around the stage, trying to get them off it.
It's so wild, I watched you. You went through a full sprint on that.
Well, we know that's a lie. Um, anyway, it was beautiful with the trees. To thank. Kevin Saroski for his talent and all that.
And public force crew put it all out, and we have this. Oh, sorry, I didn't, don't forget, Great Northern produced all the new, uh. Tree, uh, stems and, uh. Everything, it was wonderful, but our public force crew were pouring down rain one day, I just felt badly.
They always, you guys rock.
They did great, yeah.
Um, so I just wanted to, to say that, it was, it was a good turnout, that caused the popular, of course. Anyway, it was fun. And that was my first rule, I knew Jessica because she went to school with my son and, uh. Mr. Smalley there.
Well, she's great.
Um, anyway, she did a fabulous job down there, she's just so bubbly, yeah, she did great, so I was really happy with that. Um, Saturday, I guess, and I was gonna tell her, because she may not know. To invite the council to do a ribbon cutting. And anyway, they had one, but I didn't see it until. I think late Friday night or something, I happened to have a poster video on her line on Facebook. Um, but. Whether you know it or not, McDonald's put in another lane, so there's two lanes down there. Heard a lot of. So I don't know how that's going, but they did have a ribbon cutting and. Stuff to celebrate that down there Saturday morning, I guess, at ten or something, you were there. But, uh, so that was, that's nice. Uh, I wanna thank the Lions Club for doing the flags on my son's birthday, oh, I mean, you know, for Harvard. Um, so those always are so impressive when you're driving, and you see all those flags, so that was cool. And then I was gonna bring up another thing a minute ago, but I waited till now. We need to take a little trip up to Cottage Grove and look at their homeless thing, cause they have. A big lot, I don't know how big it, it goes back, so.
We already have.
Oh, have you?
Oh, yeah, in fact, uh.
That was impressive.
The community development staff are using, uh, their housing model as a means for us to create a housing model. Or the solution as mentioned earlier, Brian's on it, he's so good.
I should. I just noticed it because I go up there once a month or so, and I notice it, I was gonna stop and look in there, but it's hard.
They modeled theirs after ours, by the way.
Do they? Well, where did, how did, what did all those places, cause there's several little. Whatever you call it.
Yeah, little.
Kind of whatever, uh, in there on both sides going back. How did they, where did they get the money?
Um, they're just grants and all that, and so like I said, we're doing the same thing, but we're gonna use shipping containers. You know, uh, we've already got them ordered. Forty quarters will be divided into three little housing units. Uh, they will have, uh, electric and wood siding on the inside and the door. And they'll be used to go along the outside barrier of the current facility to create like a, a. You don't feel the ceiling. Uh, and then there will be the tent area in the wetlands portion, and then the intent is to. So we have a, a, a three-phase system, if, if, if you're home, just raising your hand saying, I'm homeless, I want a place to live. Doesn't qualify you for getting a place to live. You go to a tent, you sign up to get into what we call the OCA Program of Care. When you get into your program of care, you get to leave the tent and go into one of these little shed areas where we have electricity. Ruffle over your head in your own private living quarters. When you get through the, uh, program of care, you are employed or employable. Uh, then we will, uh, find a place for you to live. And so.
Now, this will be the one that's the center. And like in local or something.
Well, we're gonna do one here. Uh, for our residents, and each city is going to pledge doing for their residents. What makes us work, and the caveat with the city of Roseburg, I'm sorry to go on so long about homeless, but. Is that their concern is, and Nikki and I have talked extensively about this. Is that we bring this regional center there, all the cities bring the people down there, and when they finish their program of care and get into, they all land in Roseburg. And that's not the intent, the intent is the city that sponsors or they come, then that city commits. To provide housing for them when they complete their program of care. And so we're bringing that model to life, so to speak, to the extent that. These twenty-five people at some point when they go through, we, you know, suffocate them or hopefully out of business, and. The one or two stragglers that come, hopefully nationwide, there's a better solution that comes into play, so, sorry.
Thank you. Great. Good job. So I, I wanted to, uh, thank you for taking over our Sunday for the downtown trees lighting, they looked really fabulous. And I wanted to put the update, I was wondering, did they get water to basic building?
We have. We have not.
Are we working on that still?
Um. We're, we've explored doing that, we haven't taken any physical steps yet to. Take advantage of. App of waterline, it's available. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I was given a hundred percent direction.
No, we're, I, I told Wayne that we all need to look water up. He needs to get his order organized so we know, because with the new changes. Uh, I didn't want us to go digging up and then then put a shipping container over the top of it, so. He's getting his organization ready, at some point, we'll go over there and we'll tap up, put in a water meter and they'll have water available inside.
It just seems like what we've, we've given, uh, we've provided, um. Like the porta potty, we've provided like garbage, it seems like it's a, it's. A necessity, water is a necessity, and so that they should have water. So what are they doing for water now?
Right. I thought we talked about putting a water in there.
That's what I thought.
We were gonna do, I, in military term, call a water buffalo. But after reconsideration and talking to Wayne and the fact that they got the hundred thousand dollar grant and they wanna do this. Uh, they're gonna reimburse us for our costs, uh, on these things, and so if, at the end of the day, there's no harm, no foul for us. And at the end of the day, it makes more sense just to put in a, a water service there for them.
So that's in process or we're waiting?
We're waiting for Wayne to. Give us direction on how, how and where, and then Aaron and his team have to put some work in. To do that.
Uh, I also wanted to thank police for doing some extra roll on Everett and South State, they did a lot of, uh, officers sitting there and watching that. Catching quite a few people going through that intersection. Appreciate that, and I guess still looking at maybe adding some extra. Uh, either a light stop sign or right.
I could word it for that.
And then I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, next is. Public comment, the purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. And we have Yvonne Adams, you wanna come up to the microphone? And I'm not a camera, but. Thank you for the. And a little bit about myself. If anyone's here. We're not sure if it's on.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's on.
Well, there we go. Oh, boy.
Okay, I am, I moved here with my husband to Oregon in eighty-seven. Anyway, I I, I moved to Cottage, being Cottage Grove and when we got down to uh Oakton, we had our child. Um, he didn't, he's able to leave us, so I had the misfortune of raising our children. But I was uh very grateful for the job I had with Dr. Heim. I had been working for him from eighty-seven through um two thousand eight. So that's twenty-one years exactly. And um I raised my children here in Southern Illinois for the most. And I appreciate you very much. Um, I am concerned about the health and it's not just uh you know, one person who's been affected with parasites. And I was just wondering if we could put out some way of blast on water, I don't know, water bill or in some way let people know that they leave their food or their pets, especially their chickens away so that um it's not drying the skunks and the opossums and raccoons that um are ever present when we have chickens. Um, because I had to raise my children alone, I cannot be myself to turn my neighbors who are going through the misfortune of raising children alone. And so I was wondering if we could just, uh maybe put out a law that if they are found to have more than the acceptable amount of chickens and they were uh being negligent in putting their, their chicken food and hopefully their cat food, because um the wild creatures, they eat the dog and cat food too. And um single ladies seem to let their children have their own or pets to lose to other people, like their gardens, and like to keep them alive. So since they're already overwhelmed, they don't need any more gardens. I was wondering if we could gently put some statues.
I'm not sure that they would even see those statues. Uh, if you know of a residence that's got way too many chickens or you could talk to our code enforcement officer, because there are stipulations with.
I have, but I just can't. The other one, uh she had eight cats, one was pregnant. And then um she got rid of all of her mattress, they piled up. Thankfully that she got a garbage dumpster and came and picked it up on day after Thanksgiving. And um after she got rid of the cats, it, it's not like, it depends on the individual. It's not like they have a big heart, but it's because she told me that she knowing that I'd be happy, because when I hired her to feed my chickens over a year and a half ago, her daughters um was out of town. She, I would say, please leave your cats at home, you know? And so she announced that she no longer had all these cats. But um I saw one in the ditch, dead in the ditch, so it's not like they have a garden for the cats. Those welfare and the cats. It, it, and it gets disgusting because I mean, I, I have to fence around my, my front walkway because the cats use that little flower garden. Must be flower garden, so much, they were sure it was there. And after I fenced them in, it's just a makeshift, that's why I don't have to do.
So I think probably at this point, it would be best to, to make an appointment maybe with our uh code enforcement.
Yes.
And probably her, because I don't think it's something that the council could do right this evening.
Yeah.
But I think, but I really thank you for your information. And uh we could probably look into it a little more, but I think your best bet would be to talk with our.
Okay, so I already have, I was just thinking that maybe we could.
Yeah, probably not something we could make a statute with, because we probably have enough already on our books to cover it. But that would be your best bet.
Once, my favorite one was, sir. When I was raising my children, uh we rented a place behind Bosman Burger Bar in the garden. And the neighbor across the street had thirty-some cats. I mean, you can insure who have cats. And these cats were so prevalent that although we didn't have them, we had fleas inside our house. And I am glad we have a dog community, but it just seems like there could be help these people to know that it's, it's not very nice to me.
Right.
Thank you for.
Thank you so much. Thank you for here.
You have anything else?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Bye, Chad.